Good afternoon, everyone. It's so great to see all of you here in Douglas County today. I often say that what my late father used to say, September is, I think, one of the nicest months for those of us who enjoy the outdoors, and I think we have a lot of outdoor and parks enthusiasts with us today. We do have a little bit of business before us today. We're going to start with the Board of Equalization, and then we will do our normal business meeting. But with that, I'm going to go ahead and call that meeting to order for the Tuesday, September 9th Board of Equalization meeting. We will actually, I'm going to do the Pledge of Allegiance and the certification during our business meeting. I will ask if we have certification of the agenda for the Board of Equalization.
You do, Commissioner. The county attorney's office reviewed the item on the agenda, and you have appropriate jurisdiction over this matter.
Great, thank you, counsel. And do any commissioners have disclosures for items on this agenda today?
Not me.
Okay, neither do I. And Commissioner Teal is excused today. The second item today is our consent agenda. Item 2A is the approval of minutes from the October 29th, 2024 meeting. I will ask for a motion.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so we have a first on the floor. I will second that in Commissioner Teal's absence. We have a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries 2-0. With that, we'll move on to our item 3, the regular agenda. Item 3A is the acceptance of real property and personal property reports from the Douglas County Assessor. Our distinguished assessor, Toby Damish, presenting. Hi, Assessor.
Hello. Good afternoon to you and everyone in the room. Lots of good things to talk about today. So excited to hear that. It's an honor to speak to you today as your county assessor. Today's meeting of the CBOE is an annual statutory step where I am required to report to you before the beginning of CBOE, the results of the 25 reappraisal protests that were filed with my office this spring. As a reminder, County Board of Equalization hearings will be held from mid-September through late October, and those are managed by Kristi Gordon, who's, I think, in the room under county administration. And later in October, she'll be reporting to you the results of that level of hearing. But today, I am pleased to officially deliver these three reports to you, which you should have before you. They include all real property that was appealed and the results of those appeals, all personal property that was appealed and the results of those appeals, and third and finally, all personal property accounts that have failed to file a declaration. Now, in the interest of time, I'll leave it at that, and I'm available if you have any questions. I'll just say one thing. In 2023, that was a pretty incredible reappraisal for the state of Colorado, as you all know, and you were all excellent partners with me and other elected officials in trying to manage the property tax crisis that we had. I'm pleased to report that we went from an appeal rate of over 36,000 properties appealed to just over 6,000. We had one out of every four homeowners' appeal in 2023, and this year, we had 4,653 residential properties appealed. So we're back to normal, and that's great news. I think even better news is our adjustment rate for the, because we set a record. We adjusted 57% of the residential homeowners' appeals this year, and that is by far a record. Our residential appraisal manager, Becky Fisher, is in the office or in the room, so I want to thank her and really want to thank the staff at the assessor's office. We've got, on any given day, 40-some staff that do a lot of hard work, most of them licensed appraisers, and they really put their heart and their minds into doing a wonderful job for Douglas County like a lot of people who are in this room do. So I want to thank them and thank you all for the support you give us. Back to you. Thank you.
Well, Assessor, thank you for that. In my seven years, I'm not sure I have ever seen a public official work so incredibly hard and in such a dedicated fashion for all of our citizens, and we have a lot of great elected officials. But, you know, that work to return $37 million back to our citizens really speaks to the incredible work that you did with our county staff, and obviously, we want to continue to focus that forward and share that perspective. I don't know that I have any questions for you today. You've done a phenomenal job. I'll ask if the board has any additional questions for the assessor.
No questions, just thank you for your service.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So no formal action is necessary. As Chair, I will acknowledge acceptance of the real property and personal property report, and will adjourn the Board of Equalization. I'm going to ask our clerk to need a few minutes to reset for business. Okay, just one minute. So again, welcome to the Tuesday, September 9th, 2025 Board of County Commissioners Business Meeting. Before we do begin the meeting, I'll invite Darren Kessler to come up and provide our invocation. Darren?
Thank you. Let us pray. Dear Lord, we humbly come before you seeking divine guidance for our leaders, for people in this room, for people on community matters, and our first responders. We ask you grant them the gift of wisdom and discernment as they navigate the complexity of their roles, what's on their hearts, the decisions that need to be made. And so we ask and we come to you asking for clarity and insight, and are thankful that this Board of Commissioners desires to elicit your support, your sovereignty and guidance in this meeting. In your name, Jesus, amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Darren. We appreciate that. So with that, I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. If you'll, I'll rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Attorney Garcia, do we have certification of this agenda?
Yes, sir. You do. County Attorney's Office reviewed all items on the agenda, and you have appropriate jurisdiction over these matters.
Okay, great. And do any commissioners have disclosures for items on this business meeting agenda?
Yes, sir.
And I have none either. With that, we're going to move into item 2, Ceremonies and Proclamations, and we're going to begin with item 2A, which is a resolution in support of and recognition of 30 years of voters supported Parks, Trails, Historic Resources, and Open Space Sales Tax Fund in September as Parks, Trails, Historic Property, and Open Space Appreciation Month. Dan Duritz presenting for staff, our amazing Open Space Director. Welcome.
Good afternoon, commissioners.
You brought a crowd with you today.
Well, we certainly did, didn't we? What a great crowd it is, too. Many of these folks were founders of the sales tax, folks that initiated this, worked on it 30 years ago, still working for the community, still trying to do great things for our open spaces, for our parks, and for our historic resources. So it is a great crowd that we brought with us today, and we are so appreciative to have that sales tax, and I am so privileged to be able to introduce this item to you all today.
Dan, I'm going to pause you because you said something really important, and it's not every day that we celebrate 30 years. And I recognize as well that there are some really distinguished individuals in the room that were part of that original measure over 30 years ago. If you were part of that original measure, would you please stand up so we can give you a round of applause? Dan?
So commissioners, we'd like to start the meeting by doing a short video, really highlighting the great work that the sales tax dollars has provided the county.
When you're out in the great wide open riding, you get a chance to cleanse your mind, body, and spirit.
When I started exploring and physically feeling something within my soul.
The open spaces in Douglas County make you feel like you're actually out somewhere instead of in the city.
Up and at 'em!
The open space, the national parks are taken care of, which is one thing that we absolutely love about it.
You moved to Douglas County because it's beautiful landscape.
It really celebrates what Colorado is about in the spirit of the West.
It's about bringing people here and sharing it.
Look at that!
We are coming up on a tree that looks different than all other trees around. I have the best job, I think, in the entire county.
The combination of the agricultural land and absolutely untouched beautiful wild areas. This isn't just physical health, it's mental health.
You may see deer and an occasional hummingbird.
Like a black squirrel.
Look at that! Look at that bird!
I gotta go chase it!
Someday, we're going to turn over protection of this property to our children and our grandchildren and our great-grandchildren, and if we want them to be good stewards of the land, they have to have opportunities to come out here and learn to love and appreciate nature. It's absolutely beautiful.
So commissioners, we're honored to be able to be stewards of the lands that we take care of, and I know my colleagues in Parks feel the same way about taking care of the parks and trails, building grounds that we do, and the Stark Resource Group is honored to do their work as well. With that said, we do have a resolution to kind of kick off this meeting, and if the board, if it pleases the board, I would be happy to read that, or you could read that if you'd like, sir?
Please, go ahead.
So this is a resolution in support of and recognition of 30 years of voter-supported Parks, Trails, Historic Resources, and Open Space Sales Fund in September as Parks, Trails, Historic Property, and Open Space Appreciation Month. Whereas, for three decades, Douglas County voters have been supporting the Parks, Trails, Historic Resources, and Open Space Fund with a dedicated 0.17% sales and use tax. Voters most recently passed an extension of the tax with 87.6% in support. Whereas, thanks to the public's investment in these funds, the Parks Division has been able to purchase six new fields, convert several others to synthetic turf, add miles of trails to parks, and contribute 1.75 million to Reuterhess Reservoir for upkeep and recreational opportunities. Continued public support allows the Parks Department to maintain over 77 miles of trails and more than 6,300 acres, welcoming an estimated 2 million visitors to properties annually for sports activities and recreation. Whereas, thanks to the public's investment, the county has been able to purchase several historic resource properties for preservation, including the Spring Valley School site, and has been able to manage and restore several historic properties to allow for public access and education. Whereas, thanks to the public's investment, the Department of Open Space and Natural Resources has been able to acquire several properties preserving some of the last stretches of scenic and public open space properties along the I-25 corridor in Colorado, many of which are vital wildlife habitats. These properties include Greenland Ranch and Sandstone Ranch in southern Douglas County and a partnership to acquire Lost Canyon Ranch near Castlewood Canyon State Park. The Department of Open Space and Natural Resources is also able to manage and maintain 115 miles of trails for hiking, biking, and equestrian use, and oversees 65,000 acres in total, which attract an estimated 650,000 people annually. Much of this is made possible by our dedicated volunteer teams, which now number in the hundreds. Whereas, the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners recognizes the public importance of maintaining public lands, including parks, trails, and open space properties, to aid in the health, happiness, and overall wellness of a community, and recognizes that protecting our historic and natural resources protects our quality of life in Douglas County. Whereas, the Douglas County Board of County Commissioners recognizes the public's overwhelming approval for 30 years of the Parks, Trails, Historic Resources, and Open Space Fund, and formally recognizes September as Parks, Trails, Historic Property, and Open Space Appreciation Month, which will culminate with a celebration of our shared resources at a fall festival open to all residents on September 22nd, 2025, at Sandstone Ranch Open Space.
Dan, wonderfully read. Thank you so much for that. You know, this is a really significant moment, and I want to pause and also acknowledge anybody in the room that was part of the 2022 measure to re-up that sales and use tax because, again, I think part of it is this long journey, right, to ensure that we're able to preserve what is now north of 51% as open space, including Pike National Forest in Douglas County. And for those who have been around a while, you might remember our original motto from the 90s, which is Douglas County, where quality of life comes first. That quality of life doesn't happen without open space, and our commitment as stewards of the land, all of us together, is deeply felt by me as a fifth-generation Coloradan who's been able to make Douglas County my home with my family for many, many years now, and I know many of you are in that same boat. So if you were part of that 2022 measure, if you could stand as well, we'd like to recognize you. I mean, and Patty and Cheryl and Jay and Brian, I mean, you guys are just pillars that have really made this community amazing, and I think the generations that come, my children and many people's grandchildren, will be able to thank you all for the wonderful passion that you've demonstrated for our community. You know, 30 years ago, Douglas County made a very bold promise, and that was to preserve the land, the views, and the way of life that make our community extraordinary. Today, as we celebrate three decades of vision and stewardship, we do stand at the threshold of history. What began as an idea has become a legacy of open spaces, trails, and parks that connect every one of us to the land and to each other. This anniversary is not just a milestone, it is a call to carry forward a sacred trust, to dream even bigger, and to build a future where Douglas County continues to be the gold standard for parks and open space in America. With that, I'd love to open it up to the board for any questions or comments of staff.
Mr. Chair, if it pleases the board, I do have the chairs of each of the advisory boards here that would like to make statements for the commissioners today?
I believe that to be true. Let me ask the board if they have any questions, and then we'll have these distinguished guests come up and join us. Commissioner?
No, Mr. Chairman, I'll save my comments for after their statements.
Sounds good. Back to you.
Thank you, sir. On that note, I'd like to introduce the Open Space Advisory Board Chair, Mr. Jay Sage.
Commissioners, Mr. County Attorney, Mr. County Manager, my name is Jay Sage, and I've been asked to speak on behalf of the Open Space and Natural Resources Division based on my experience as an open space volunteer. Commissioner Van Winkle, as so happens, in the fall of 2021, you were representing us in the State House, so let me address this, comments to Commissioner Layden and, of course, Commissioner Teal, because I was in his offices and your offices, Commissioner Layden, with Miki Clark, who's here today, asking for your help. We're asking for your help, guidance, and advice on extending the Parks, Trails, Open Space, and Historic Preservation Sales Tax. Thank you so much from the bottom of our hearts for helping Douglas County extend that sales tax, that sales tax initiative, according to the Trust for Public Lands, passed by a national record 87%. So the question is, has open space been productive the past 30 years? The answer is a definite yes, yes, yes. One of our properties, Greenland Ranch, was recently in the news. In May, former U.S. Secretary of Interior Ken Salazar called Greenland Ranch "a Colorado crown jewel." In August, former Colorado Springs Mayor John Southers called Greenland Ranch "Colorado's best parcel of open space," and that, commissioners, is mighty high praise. And the fact is, Greenland Ranch is just one of the 70 properties we have protected in Douglas County. In addition to the 20,500 acres of Greenland Ranch, we have protected 65,000 acres in Douglas County. Our purchases have ranged from the largest Greenland Ranch to the small but mighty six acres of Taos property in Lone Tree. Under the guidance of past and current, and the current Board of County Commissioners, our funding partners have provided more funds for acquisitions than the county has spent, and that is truly an amazing statistic. However, I am here to remind us all that these numbers are secondary, truly secondary, to the purpose of creating open space. When we create open space, we fulfill something bigger than ourselves. When we protect open space, we ultimately conserve nature and protect wildlife to make Douglas County a better place to live. Now, thoughts and quotes about nature and wildlife have been written for decades. Maybe everyone in the room would recognize this from John Muir, "The mountains are calling, and I must go." Here are two other quotes. "Look deep into nature, and then you will understand everything better," that from Albert Einstein, and "Nature always wears the color of the spirit," from Ralph Waldo Anderson. Commissioners, like John Denver in his song "Rocky Mountain High," I moved to Colorado in my 27th year. Denver in his song celebrates the beauty and spiritual experience found in open space. Whether you moved to Douglas County or were born here, nature, wildlife, and open space give us all inspiration from the beauty of the land to dream and create for a better county for our residents. Thank you, commissioners, for continuing to make conserving nature and protecting wildlife in Douglas County a priority, the benefits, and this benefits all residents of the county creating a greater good. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Commissioners, I now have Amanda Budemilia from, I am so sorry, Amanda, from the Parks Advisory Board.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Good afternoon, commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today about the Parks, Trails, Building Grounds, and the Reuterhess Recreation Division. I am Amanda Budemilia, the chairperson for the Parks Advisory Board. As you are aware, in the most recent 2025 Douglas County Citizen Survey, Parks and Trails had the highest approval rating of all county services, provided with 91% of the respondents being positive. Douglas County has received a top-three ranking for healthiest counties in the nation since 2018, which means the residents of Douglas County actively participate in outdoor activities and recreational opportunities. The Parks Division is instrumental in offering clean, well-maintained, and local and regional, for local and regional parks, diverse trails, and whatever water creation activities you can do at Reuterhess, which is all supporting a wide range of outdoor activities. These facilities host many activities such as adult and youth sports, which my own family takes part of, running and biking, concerts in parks, which we go to often, community events such as the Fourth of July fireworks, picnics, water sports, equestrian trail rides, and wildlife viewing. The Park and Trails Division is responsible for maintaining 6,359 acres of land, with over 4,000 being compromised of parks. They maintain 30 local park sites, with 19 being local and 11 being regional parks. And they also are responsible for over 70 miles of trails with seven trailheads. They have partnered with 10 of the county's historical sites to do the mowing, and most recently, other municipalities have trusted Douglas County to maintain and grow outdoor opportunities with Reuterhess Reservoir. We have seen a positive growth since Douglas County took over the reservoir in 2023 with a 100% increase in visitation. All of these spaces are thoroughly maintained with an annual budget of 2.1 million. I'd like to highlight a few of these large projects which have been completed in the last 30 years using Parks, Trails, Historical Resources, and Open Space Tax Fund. I did give a sheet to the attorney, but here's a few of the highlights. Construction of the active side of Bayou Gold Regional Park, construction of the fairgrounds Regional Park Fields, the East-West Trail construction from Redstone Park all the way to Parker, almost 20 miles, construction of the West Fields at Highlands Ranch Heritage Park Regional Park, construction of the Cherry Creek Trail from the highway all the way to Castlewood Canyon, and construction of the stage and amphitheater at Highlands Heritage Regional Park, and replacement recently from 2018 to 2025 of six different turf fields. So Douglas County, in the last 30 years, has invested over $27 million into our parks and trails. Serving on the Parks Advisory Board has been both an honor and a privilege. I sit along dedicated residents from all three districts, each bringing unique passions and perspectives that help us better reflect the voices of our communities. Over the past 15 months that I've served on the Parks Board, we have heard, reviewed, scored, and given feedback on 11 proposals, each one bringing potential benefit to Douglas County from youth sports, playgrounds, interactive use of both passive and active space. And what sounds, what stands out most about the board is our intentionality, that members ask questions, weigh the cost, and think carefully about the long-term impact. I've been able to see how Parks and Trails Division plays the vital role not only in maintaining our amazing parks that get a ton of use every year, but in preserving the trails. From improving trailheads, restrooms, and parking, all of this enhances the quality of experience for everyone. It is this level of care from everyone in the Parks Division that makes Douglas County such a desirable place to live and enjoy the outdoors. Equally important is the input from the residents of Douglas County through surveys and community input. We've actually heard hundreds of voices, such as the strong support for keeping Wildcat Reserve as a passive-use open space in partnership with HRCA. These conversations remind us of the important responsibility we share in shaping how Douglas County land is cared for and used. So finally, I am grateful for the opportunity to support the ongoing vision for parks and trails in Douglas County, and I look forward to continuing to see the positive impact of these spaces and what it brings to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda.
Next commissioners, we have the Chair of the Historic Preservation Board, Chris Schutzenberger.
I'm Chris Schutzenberger, the Chair of the County Historic Preservation Board, and your Historic Preservation Board is delighted to be a part of the team that is preserving and protecting the historic treasures of Douglas County, while also enabling more capacity for public outreach, development of exhibits, and enhancement of visitor experiences at open space properties. In pursuing historic preservation projects, the county team has been very successful in obtaining state historic fund grants whereby the state fund matches $3 for every $1 of county funds. It's an excellent leveraging of the investment of county funds. The Historic Resources Program has successfully leveraged over $1 million of state historical fund grants with the help of the sales tax to restore significant properties and perform archaeological excavations of the county. We are in a continuous partnership with open space on multiple projects, restoring the Evans Homestead, which is a national landmark on the Lincoln Mountain Open Space that will soon be a trail destination for a greater public access. Really looking forward to that ribbon cutting. We're producing signage for the Greenland Open Space and restoring structures on the Columbine Open Space. In addition to work on county properties, we've also partnered with nonprofit foundations in Douglas County such as Schweiger Ranch and Cherokee Ranch. We've also had a regular presence in the community with outreach at the annual International Archaeology Day, Douglas County Fair, Schweiger Ranch Open House, presentations, repository tours, and developing exhibits at Parker Water, the Town of Parker, and at the Douglas County Libraries. The Historic Preservation Board looks forward to continue to serve by studying the many needs and advising our leaders so that these tax funds are used wisely and responsibly to preserve our county's historic heritage for future generations. I thank you.
We thank you as well.
Commissioners, before I conclude this presentation, I do want to thank all of our volunteers that showed up, all of the supporters that showed up, all of you that are making a difference in our community. Thank you very much for being here today. And with that said, commissioners, that concludes the presentation. And with that said, Commissioners, that concludes the presentation. We are available for any questions that you may have.
Great, well, that is just tremendous. And I think, you know, one of the big hallmarks of Douglas County is that it's good people that are passionate about what they do. Dan, you're, I think, the first person I met in Douglas County, and you epitomize that, so thank you for your leadership. But for all of our board chairs, I think exactly the same of each of you. I think many times the public might wonder, are the Commissioners passionate about parks, or is it open space, or is it history? And the secret is, it's all three, right? And there are great opportunities to interweave and connect with all three in a really significant way. We know that open space really led the charge and has been leading the charge in helping to grow and work with parks and work with historic resources so that all three can be really significant in Douglas County. But they are all so significant to each of us on the board. I will say, if you are a volunteer that has worked in parks, open space, or historic resources, can you stand so that we can recognize you? That's wonderful. So with that, I'm going to open it up for any questions or comments from the board.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I just can't thank you enough for your work and for all the work from the folks that are here today and those that came before, those that couldn't be here, because none of this would be possible without the volunteerism, without the heart. It's the citizens of Douglas County with a heart for this, for our parks and our open space. And there are the citizens and the volunteerism and the hard work and dedication that make it possible. As Mr. Sage's terrific quotes kind of pointed out, our parks and open space really reflects who we are as a community. It reflects our health, our happiness, and our quality of life. It's with the ballot measures, we've really, I think, found a very well-reasoned way to balance the urban with the rural, with the outdoor recreation, and also a people's connection, a true connection to nature. Even in maybe the most dense portions of Highlands Ranch, we have past open space, we have trails. I think it was 187 miles of trails we have throughout the county in open space. And really, it's a reflection that lifts us all up. It lifts up our quality of life, it lifts us up as humans, and also our property values as well. But that said, we're actually just on the cusp, and this is terrific timing, because we're on the cusp as a county of seeing a new era, historic era, of new parks and new open space that we haven't seen perhaps in my lifetime, or at least since I was a very young boy growing up in Highlands Ranch. We are about to see some terrific parks that are on the agenda for today in Lone Tree and Parker, as well as the first terrific new recreational facilities on the west side. And of course, that open space that is going to be such a great keystone project of Highlands Ranch. It's in joint work with HRCA. Us together, county and HRCA, are going to put some amazing, we're going to preserve the open space, put in the PaaS, really make it just a crown jewel of Southern Highlands Ranch. And that is just the tip of the iceberg about where we're going to go. And it's all thanks to the voters. It's all thanks to the voters 30 years ago and in 2022, and to the volunteers that make it possible. So from the bottom of my heart, as someone that was born and raised on the PaaS and the parks and the open spaces of Douglas County, and now I've chosen to bring my kids, raise them here on our parks and our open space. Thank you from the bottom of my heart and my family's.
Thank you, Commissioner. A true son of Douglas County, we appreciate your leadership. I don't think it's any accident that I named my son Bolden Thoreau Layden. I know we heard the quote from Emerson, but those values around protecting our lands is really significant. Let me open it up for any additional citizen comment in the room. Is there any additional citizen comment in the room with regard to this item? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to open it up online. Any citizen comment online?
Thank you, Commissioner, I have no online comment.
Okay, thank you, Troy. So with that, I'm going to close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. I move the resolution to support the recognition of 30 years of voter-support of Parks, Trails, Historic Resources, and Open Space Sales Tax Fund in September as the Parks, Trails, Historic Property and Open Space Appreciation Month.
And I will enthusiastically second that motion. Is there any further discussion? I would be remiss if I didn't also acknowledge and thank all of our past and present staff and those that have worked on behalf of the county government and other governments to protect our land and this community. It's really significant to us, so thank you for that. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. How about a big round of applause? So if you would, I know Drew is going to have all of us. If you are a part of Parks, Historic, or Open Space and here to celebrate this resolution, if you join us up front here near the dais, we're going to take a photo. Okay, thank you so much, everybody, for taking the time for that important ceremony. As people are settling back in or making their way out, we're going to move on with the agenda. And I will, if I could call the meeting back to order, please. So what I'm going to do is go ahead and move up a few items on the regular agenda because they're very connected to what we just did. I'm going to move up items C and D to items A and B. So the first item we'll hear on our regular agenda will be the motion around the Parks Funding Agreement between Douglas County and the Town of Parker for $7.5 million for the construction of Salisbury Park North.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Luke Thornton, representing Community Development. The request before you today is to approve the Parks Funding Agreement in the amount of $7,500,000 between Douglas County and the Town of Parker. The Town of Parker submitted a funding application requesting $8,240,725 for the construction of Phase One of Salisbury Park North. The Town of Parker will cover all costs above $7,500,000, approximately $17,600,000. In accordance with the Parks, Trails, Historic Resources, and Open Space Tax, the project was reviewed and recommended by the Parks Advisory Board on March 24, 2025. Staff recommends that the Board of County Commissioners approve the Parks Funding Agreement between Douglas County and the Town of Parker. This concludes my presentation. Present today from Town of Parker is Mayor Rivero and Town of Parker staff. Thank you.
Welcome, Luke, thank you so much. And we'd like to welcome up the Mayor of Parker.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. First and foremost, I learned something from Mayor Holly Rogan of Lyons. She said, "Always keep a jacket in your car in case you get called at the last minute." I do have a jacket in my car, but it does not match my black shorts. So I do apologize. Apologize for my attire, but I am here at the last minute.
Never apologize. This is true, Josh Rivero, mayor attire, and we love it. We would feel weird if you were in a jacket, Josh.
Touche, touche. Thank you, gentlemen. It's an honor to stand here in front of you. It was last minute, but we wanted to show how important this is to the Town of Parker. Significant investment. I'll take you back. My family moved to Parker in the late 80s for horses. We're a horse family. And so the root of the property that we are talking about today started with horses. Back in 1989, the Salisbury Equestrian Center was built. That was the blood, that was what we were in Parker back then. As that changed and as we turned into that family-oriented community, sports became important. And in 2003, Salisbury Park, baseball and softball fields were built. Then in 2008, we acquired 91 acres to the north. And that's the beautiful property that we are talking about today. That's what these dollars are going to go for. Town Council approved a master plan way back. So this journey started in 2014 for me. I was elected at first in '12. And so in 2014, myself and John Dyak were on council when we started this journey to fulfill the dream of what we think is our central park to the Town of Parker. 2015, we asked for a ballot question to raise .05 sales tax. The citizens did not agree, so we started to save money, and rightfully so. We would rather pay cash and do it the right way. And so we started to save money. We set aside funding for the construction of park from '14 to '23, so nine years of putting money into our piggy bank. And then in 2024, we allocated $3.25 million for design and drawings. And then in 2025, total approved $36 million for buildout of this park, including the 7.5 and then also an 8.1 in our shareback. So incredible dollars, but going to go to an incredible park. Let me tell you just a little bit about the park. As it exists right now, we have four incredible baseball fields that are highly used. One named in honor of Mr. Todd Heldon, a local hero to us, an incredible baseball player. And another one named after Dale Farmer, one of the founding fathers of our community in Town of Parker. And then on top of that, we have a multi-use field or a polo field. And then, as I spoke earlier, the equestrian aspect to the arena to the south of that. But what we're going to get with this investment from the county today and then with our savings is four lighted natural grass baseball fields or softball fields, two lighted synthetic turf multi-use soccer fields, restrooms, parking, bike, what do you call it, a pump track for bicycles. We already have an existing cycle-cross track. We're going to have another one. Just an incredible amount of amenities. I know it's, some love it or hate it, but 21 pickleball courts, also tennis courts. And then the biggest and I think one of the coolest things is a gathering space, a huge event space, a green, if you will, with a band shell, a place where a community can gather and recognize who they are. So as I said earlier, truly our central park. This is in the midst of Parker, and anybody can get to it with our new roads, and it's easily accessible, but will be an incredible, incredible asset to our community. The regional aspect is my last point. We will have eight total baseball diamonds. We will be able to run an incredible amount of tournaments, which obviously, as we see it, you know, as elected officials, is economic driver. We have to look at that lens, look at everything through that lens sometimes. And this is a huge economic driver. So again, we thank you for the investment, allowing us to move forward the phasing and get this park out and usable to our citizens first and foremost. So thank you guys so very much. It's an honor to stand in front of you.
Well, it's an incredible honor for us, Mayor. And I have to say, as a point of personal privilege, you know, we're elected at large as Commissioners, but we each come from districts. And I am really humbled to have both the Mayor of Lone Tree and the Mayor of Parker with us here today, my district leadership. The collaboration that we have as municipalities with the county is really significant to us. And today, we are going to be delivering truly the most historic and record-setting level of parks and recreation amenities that this county has ever seen. So we are very thankful. And, you know, we talked about Kevin being sort of a son of Douglas County with a lot of rich heritage. You are a true son of Parker, and I know you bleed Parker. So thank you for being such a great representative for the people in your community.
Appreciate that, sir.
Absolutely, thank you. I'm going to open it up for any questions or comments from the board.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mayor, for being here today. This is just such an exciting time for Douglas County as a whole, especially for what we are celebrating today, which is new parks in Parker and Lone Tree. And it's just, I mean, this has been a long time coming. Since before I was a county commissioner, when I was sworn in in December, this was a hot topic. And I know the folks in Parker, you included, were working very diligently on this plan. So it is an honor to be a part of it at this stage and look forward to the groundbreaking here soon.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner. With that, I'm going to open it up for any citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment in the room with regard to this item? Okay, not seeing any in the room. Troy, do we have any citizen comment online?
Thank you, sir, I have no online comment.
Okay. So with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. It's my honor to move to approve the Parks Funding Agreement between Douglas County and the Town of Parker for $7.5 million for the construction of Salisbury Park North.
And I will enthusiastically second that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that passes unanimously. How about a big round of applause for Parker? And Parker, do stick around if you or your representatives are available. We are going to take a photo at the end of some of the Parks items on our agenda today, if you're able to do that. So with that, we're going to move on to the second item that we're moving up from our regular agenda. And that is a Parks and Funding Agreement between Douglas County and the City of Lone Tree for $7.5 million for the construction of High Note Regional Park. Luke Thornton, once again, Parks Program Coordinator, presenting for staff. Luke?
Thank you, Commissioner. As you already stated, this is between Douglas County and the City of Lone Tree for $7,500,000 for the construction of Phase One of High Note Regional Park. The City of Lone Tree submitted a funding application requesting $8 million for the construction of Phase One of High Note Regional Park. Lone Tree, South Suburban Parks and Recreation, the Southeast Public and Proven Metropolitan District in Greater Door's Colorado have dedicated $23,580,000 in matching funds towards this project. In accordance with the Parks, Trails, Historic Resources, and Open Space Tax, the project was reviewed and recommended by the Parks Advisory Board on September 11, 2024. Staff recommends that the Board of County Commissioners approve the Parks Funding Agreement between Douglas County and the City of Lone Tree. Present today from Lone Tree is Mayor Harmon, Councilmember Anderson, Councilmember Brown, and city staff, as well as the Board Chair Pam Eller and staff from South Suburban Parks and Recreation. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you so much, Luke. Let me first ask if there are any questions of staff. Okay, with that, we'd love to welcome up our guests. Welcome, Mayor.
Where's Josh? I remembered bringing a jacket in the car. Actually, Mayor Rogan from Lyons did share that at our last Metro Mayor's Caucus meeting. It is an honor to be here today. I have to tell you, if you ever want to feel really great about what you're doing as an elected official, go visit the third graders at Lone Tree Elementary. I spent the day with them yesterday, about 50 of them, talking about High Note Regional Park and what's to come, and they are very excited. So I'm Marissa Harmon, the mayor of the beautiful city of Lone Tree. Of course, I am joined by, as Luke said earlier, Councilmember and park champion Mike Anderson, and so happy that he is here today because we are so excited about the future of Lone Tree. So on behalf of our residents and city council, I want to say thank you for considering the $7.5 million investment into Colorado's next signature project, High Note Regional Park. High Note Regional Park. A special thank you to our residents, as you mentioned earlier, that continue to support parks and open space and how important it is. As we mentioned, we couldn't do this alone. We all know that. We have an incredible partnership, of course, joined today by South Suburban Parks and Rec District, Douglas County SP Med and the Denver South Group has also committed one million dollars, GOCO five hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and of course, in partnership with us, it is just over thirty-one million dollars that we have for Phase One of the park. It is all about collaboration and bringing high caliber park amenities to our region and our county, and we are so excited to be able to break ground on that. So a few of the features I have to talk about, our community swing, a place for all ages and abilities to feel welcome and connected, of course, athletic fields. It's the hot topic. And as we continue to expand that, we are giving additional resources and amenities for our youth around the county, and of course, that economic driver, as Mayor Rivero mentioned earlier, and a beautiful playground. So this playground is located in the middle of the athletic fields. So if you're a parent, like all of us, your kid can play on the soccer field, not near a road, but within just a bird's eye view of maybe a sibling playing soccer. That's a really big deal. So thank you so much for your consideration. We know that we can only do this together in partnership with Douglas County, South Suburban, and of course, the City of Lone Tree. We are going to turn this vision into a reality, and I am so excited to invite you to our groundbreaking. So thank you so much for your consideration today and looking forward to hopefully a supported motion.
Mayor, thank you so much for that. You know, this approval of seven point five million each for parks in Lone Tree and Parker marks a once-in-a-lifetime moment. It's the most significant investment in parks and open space in the history of Douglas County. This is not just funding. It is generational commitment to our people and to our land. From neighborhood playgrounds to the transformational Zebulon complex that you both are supporting or excited for that, these investments will shape the daily lives of families, athletes, and adventurers for decades to come. We are building not just parks, but monuments to the quality of life, health, and community. The choices that we make today will echo for generations, and Douglas County is choosing to lead boldly into a future where our parks and open space stand as a living legacy of who we are and what we believe. We are so honored to have you here, Mayor. Let me open it up for any additional questions or comments from our board.
No comments from me, Mr. Chair. Just appreciate you being here. Appreciate this day being here because it's been a long time coming. And it's just, I don't know if we've had too many days like this in Douglas County history where we've essentially laid out funding with so many great partners and local governments, such as Lone Tree and Parker, for really the future of Douglas County and a whole new generation of young Douglas County kids and adults alike to enjoy open spaces and parks. So thrilled to be a part of it and can't wait to make a motion here in a moment.
Are you having fun here compared to the... Maybe you're... I knew you had a lot of fun at the Capitol, right? Well, fantastic. With that, I'm going to open it up for any citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment in the room with regard to this item? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to open it up for any citizen comment online. Troy, do we have any citizen comment online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Okay, so with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
Mr. Chair, it's my honor to move to approve the Parks Funding Agreement between Douglas County and the City of Lone Tree for seven point five million dollars for the construction of the High Note Regional Park.
And I will also enthusiastically second that motion. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Please join me in a round of applause for Lone Tree. Well, to my wonderful District One colleagues, if you'd like to join us up at the dais, we'll take a photo. Well, thank you for that. A lot of great things to celebrate today. We're going to head back into our regular agenda and move on to the resolution approving the Douglas County Emergency Operations Plan, which was... I'll pop back to that. Yep. And that will be done by Brandon Lenderick, the Emergency Management Deputy Director. Brandon?
All right. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Brandon Lenderick, Deputy Director, Office of Emergency Management. And I'm here today to present the resolution for approving the updated Douglas County Emergency Operations Plan. And that Emergency Operations Plan is essential across all our mission areas within our, mission areas within our office, from preparedness to mitigation, response, and recovery. And really, this plan aims to enhance our communication across all the different levels of government to create and maintain a common operational picture amongst all our partners. It fosters communications across individual agencies, our departments, private sector partners, our mutual aid partners, and it really is to ensure that each entity all understand their roles and responsibilities and their defined assignments within that plan. This collaborative approach optimizes incident response in our response and recovery efforts. And it incorporates, as far as the two thousand and twenty-five plan, it incorporates best practices in emergency management, and it aligns with our new common statewide structure that is for the county emergency operation plans. As well as what is most important, it reflects the needs of Douglas County by integrating lessons that we have learned over recent events in past years. Within the past four years, the county's numerous wildfire incidents, to include the two thousand and twenty-two Highlands Ranch tornado event and the two thousand and twenty-four BMW Championship Golf Tournament at Castle Pines. This resolution will repeal the previous resolution, which established the emergency and disaster authorizations that approved the Douglas County EOP or Emergency Operations Plan that was on September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. It will be replaced by the authorizations and authorities outlined in this new resolution. So I just want to say thank you in advance, all the time and attention to this important two thousand and twenty-five update of this Douglas County Emergency Operations Plan. We appreciate the support of all of our stakeholders, as you saw, all the signatories that are on there, their partnerships that we all strive together to make Douglas County a safer and absolutely more prepared community, extremely resilient for both our citizens and our businesses.
Well, Brandon, thank you so much for that, and thank you for your leadership in this work. It is no secret that it is deeply important to this Board of County Commissioners to support emergency management, and I don't think we have a better leader than Mike Alexander and the team that you have created, sir. It's been really significant to us. We often talk about quality of life in our community, and investing in parks and open space is a big part of that. But it also is a huge investment in public safety that allows us to do what we do. Because people and businesses perceive and believe Douglas County rightly to be a safe place that has great amenities, that's why property values go up. And we try to keep taxes low, but that's actually how we get paid is through property taxes. So we'll keep returning property taxes back to the citizens, but people often ask, "How is Douglas County so prosperous, so wealthy?" It's because we have a great quality of life here, and emergency management is a huge piece of that. So thank you. Let me open it up for any questions from our board.
No questions from me, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. So with that, are there any questions or comments from our citizens? Any citizen comment? Okay, any citizen comment online, Troy?
Thank you. I have no online comment.
All right. So with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. And, you know, being a county commissioner, it's a very interesting job. There's a lot of very exciting things that we get to do. There's exciting new parks and open space. But when it comes to what keeps us awake at night as a county commissioner, it's what, it's the fear of what we don't see coming. It's the fear of the worst natural disaster or other kind of disaster that could strike our community. And it's these folks that are thinking about that every day, preparing for that every day, making sure that the citizens of Douglas County are safe, their properties are safe, and that we can be a community that thrives. And so my thanks from by my heart to you. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve a resolution approving the Douglas County Emergency Operation Plan, something that is an easy motion for me to make, but a tremendous amount of thought work and teamwork has gone into this plan. And again, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, and very wise words. Certainly appreciate that. You know, we think about what happened over the summer with the Leveres Fire and, you know, a train lighting up some dry grass and a community needing to be evacuated. The state's helicopter was not available for us that day, but we had a helicopter here. It was available in a few minutes, and due to great work with ground crews and obviously the fire department, emergency management, that was addressed. You know, the county, the last I heard, it was thirty-four fires and nine of which were out of the county. I know it's north of that now, right, Mike? And we're getting reimbursed every time we go outside of the county because fires don't know boundaries. But, you know, these, these investments don't really matter a whole lot if they're on fire. If parks catch on fire, if buildings catch on fire, and if these emergencies overwhelm us. And I, I always feel very confident as a commissioner that our emergency management professionals are not only handling really tough situations, but you are proactive and prepared. You are ready. If I were a business owner anywhere in the world, I would think this is a great place to invest because I don't have to worry about a natural disaster overtaking our community. You know, unforeseen things happen for sure, but I know that you all have it under control. So thank you very much for that. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion carries unanimously. Thanks, you guys.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, yeah, let's give them a big round of applause. Our final item in our regular agenda today, and then we're going to pop back to our consent agenda because we went from our ceremony related to open space to parks. For regular agenda, it's item four B, which will now be four D. It's the construction contract with American West Construction LLC for the geo-polymers lining project in the amount of two million, seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars, Douglas County Project SP twenty twenty-five dash zero one nine. Deborah Kula, Special Projects Engineer, presenting for staff. Hi, Deborah.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Deborah Kula for Engineering Staff. I'm here this afternoon regarding the Douglas County Engineering Proposed Maintenance with Geo-Polymer Spray, Spray on Lining for three large diameter culverts in Douglas County, Project Number SP twenty twenty-five dash zero one nine.
Deborah, I apologize. We're going to have to take a brief recess. This is a call. Not an emergency, but near that. We're going to take a brief recess for five minutes. Of course, we're having some really important business conversations right now, so we're excited to maybe share some other good news down the road, but don't want to get ahead of any of that. So, with that continuing forward, so, we're going to continue with Deborah. Go ahead, Deborah.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Deborah Kula for Engineering Staff. I am here this afternoon regarding the Douglas County Engineering Proposed Maintenance with Geo-Polymer Spray on Lining for three large diameter culverts, Project Number SP 2025-019. Our program has mapped 30,000 segments of storm sewer within Douglas County, and we have ranked each segment by age. Based on this mapping, we have determined that Douglas County owns and maintains 15,000 of those segments, and which equates to 1.5 million linear feet of storm sewer, or 284 miles. And for reference, 284 miles means that you can drive to Santa Fe, New Mexico, or it is 4,100 football fields worth of storm sewer. Our process is that each segment is inspected, cleaned, re-inspected, and then maintenance is conducted. Approximately 6,000 segments of what Douglas County owns and maintains have been inspected. Our current budget is $4.5 to $5 million per year, and with that, we can complete four to six small replacements per year, 12 to 24 UV lining projects per year, and depending on the size, one to two slip lining projects. Staff is always looking for ways to stretch our maintenance dollars by utilizing new technologies, and Geo-Polymer Spray on Lining is one of those new technologies. Staff conducted research with suppliers, contractors, and verified information with our C dot website partners. This new technology has allowed us to complete more pipes than we originally anticipated to complete with the $2.5 to $3 million that we had budgeted for 2024 to 2025. We were supposed to slip line the Broadway culverts only this year for the $2.5 to $3 million, but based on our research, we added in two additional large culverts on Rampart Range and in University, along with the original Broadway culverts. This first picture is a location of our Rampart Range project. It is located on Rampart Range Road at Village Circle, right across from the Roxboro Elementary Our second site, our original site, there is a dual 126-inch covert underneath Broadway, right there at the North Ridge Rec Center, just south of C 470 and north of Highlands Ranch Parkway. We've also been able to add in a small lateral that runs right along the North Ridge Rec Center that ties into that dual 126-inch pipe, installed in 1984. And our third site today is a 90-inch storm sewer that runs under University. It comes from the southeast corner of Wildcat Reserve Parkway to the outfall along Fallbrook Drive there, near the east, just on the east side of East Ridge Rec Center. Staff bid all three locations for Geo-Polymer repair, and the received bids allowed us to complete all three locations for about the same cost of slip lining one location. This was a great lesson learned because of the number of large pipes that we need to conduct maintenance on under major ridways in the county. Staff's recommendation is for approval of the construction contract with American West Construction. Thank you.
Great, Deborah. Thank you so much for that. Any questions from our board? Okay, I don't have any questions either. Let me open it up for any citizen comment. Is there any citizen comment in the room with regard to this item? Okay, seeing none, any citizen comment online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Okay, thank you, Troy. So with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion or a motion.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. And as we know, our county is aging at the same time as we're doing brand-new things. We must take care of what's under our feet. It's not always as sexy as new parks or anything, but this is a very important project. As we saw just a couple of months ago, Dad Clark and right just north of here was actually shut down to a water main break. That was a tremendous, I guess, impact on the community there, just for a couple hours, but it was an impact. And by doing this, we're going to be saving a lot of money and time and attention and safety in the future. So, with that, Mr. Chair, I move to approve a construction contract with American West Construction LLC for the Geo-Polymer Lining Project in the amount of $2,778,770, Douglas County Project SP 2025-019.
Great, thank you for that, Commissioner. I will second that motion. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that passes unanimously, 2 to 0. Thank you, Deborah.
Thank you.
With that, we're going to pop back up to our consent agenda, and I will accept the motion on our consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to approve the requests on all items A through Z on the consent agenda.
Great, and I'll second that motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that motion passes 2 to 0. We are about a half hour past our time to begin our public hearing, but I will open it up for some very brief citizen comments if we can. At this time, you are welcome to comment about any topic other than those that appeared on today's agenda. This is an opportunity to share your thoughts and ideas with us. Please state your name and where you reside prior to making comments, and you'll have up to three minutes. Any disruptive behavior, such as impeding officials, refusing to leave when asked, or attempting to disrupt the meeting, may result in criminal charges. Commissioner's comments, if any, will follow all citizen comments. Any citizen comment? Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon. I'm Annette Thud from Congresswoman Lauren Boebert's office. She has been very, very busy lately with the Elbert County... She's been working with the Elbert County Commissioners. There have been... Excel Energy has used eminent domain against 49 of their landowners, and the Commissioners have stood up and are fighting for their citizens, and Congresswoman Boebert is fighting right alongside of them. The ZIP Code bill has... she sponsored that. It made it through the House. We're waiting for it to go through the Senate, but that helped Lone Tree, Sterling Ranch, parts of Highlands Ranch, and Castle Pines. So, it's been really good for Douglas County. As always, we just want to offer our help to you as the Board of Commissioners or anyone here. Our office is near the Lincoln Station at Lincoln and 25, so please feel free to stop in and reach out to us, and we'd be happy to help you with anything that you guys have going. So, thank you.
Great, and as a point of personal privilege, we get an opportunity to spend time with Congresswoman Boebert often, and want to thank her again for her investment and advocacy in the congressional-directed spending for the Leveres Water and the Big Water Project we're focused on, so thank you for that.
I'll relay that. Thank you.
Water's a big deal to us. Thank you. Any additional citizen comment? Okay, any citizen comment online?
Thank you, sir. I have no online comment.
Okay, with that, I'll close citizen comment and ask the board, is there any additional business for us today?
No, sir.
Okay, county manager, any additional business? And then, anything from the county manager's report? Okay. Any Commissioner comments? The only Commissioner comment I have, I see a number of individuals from our Douglas County Community Foundation, and just want to thank them for the incredible work that they have put into not only a year of great fundraising for nonprofits and the work that we do, but also for the Heroes Gala, which is on Friday. I'd love to say go buy tickets, but it's sold out. It is the hot ticket, but that is going to support first responders in our community. We do support public safety in Douglas County, so it's a real honor to celebrate with you all. Thank you for being with us. With that, we are adjourned. The next business meeting will be held on Tuesday, September 23, 2025, at 1:30 p.m. Thank you.